That's a good picture.
Good impact.
You have a good turnout, now, good impact.
Yeah.
All right. We'll get this going this evening. Thanks to everybody for being here this evening. For those at home, thank you for watching. We're here tonight as a joint effort between the city council and the members of the Cable Commission to talk about a few issues that are coming up on the not-so-distant horizon. So perhaps the best way to kick it off is I'll have our city manager kind of kick off into some background and details, get us all on the same page, and then move forward from there.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you're aware, the Cable Commission is appointed by the city council and is charged with a number of responsibilities, one of which is to negotiate a contract with our provider Comcast. And what I'd like to do this evening is to turn the program over to John Gregg, the chairman of the Cable Television Communications Commission, and have him talk about the activities that have taken place over the last few months as it relates to the Cable Commission and some of the work that they plan to do over the next few months. And I, at this time, turn over to Chairman Gregg.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh-huh, good. My name is John Gregg, and I'm the chairman of the Cable Television Commission of Portsmouth. The cable franchise agreement between the city and Comcast will expire December 31 of 2007. Although that may seem like a long way away, the process in negotiating a new agreement is often very lengthy and requires that we begin early. The Commission actually began preparing for these negotiations almost a year ago. Tonight, we would like to update you with regard to what we have learned so far and make some broad recommendations that will support negotiations with Comcast. Let me first, however, introduce the members of the Cable Commission. They are Kathy Pierce, Brian Gregg, Louis Venceguera, and Nancy Beach. Of course, the work of our Commission is done with the excellent support of the city staff, in particular John Bohenko, Alan Brady, Suzanne Woodland, and Elaine Bukas. Cable franchise agreements are constructed within a framework prescribed by federal and state law. There are things that can and cannot be negotiated, and there are formal steps to be followed. In addition, the landscape of telecommunications, which has always been confusing, is now much more so because it is changing so rapidly. We would like to begin our conversation with you by outlining this framework, and Suzanne Woodland will do this for us.
Thank you. Suzanne Woodland, Assistant City Attorney. As part of the Comcast renegotiation process, there is both a formal process and an informal process. The formal process consists of what we call ascertainment hearings. That's the beginning of our process, and that is where the Cable Commission takes in the information from the public and the city departments and creates a formal record, which is part of the negotiation process with Comcast. It's our first opportunity to really get information from the general public and from the departments in terms of the needs, how well or not-so-well Comcast or any other provider is doing in the community. And that is what this Commission has been doing for several months now, or actually almost a year. The first ascertainment hearing that we held was in September 8th of 2005. We then held two hearings in 2006, one in April and another one in August. So that ascertainment process is building that formal record. Now, as a practical matter, all of our prior Comcast agreements have actually been resolved via an informal process, which is basically a negotiation between the cable provider and the city and its representatives. But we go through this formal mechanism so that in the event negotiations fail, there's a certain mechanism under federal law through which we could hopefully reach a resolution. But as a practical matter, generally, these are resolved informally, but the ascertainment process is a great method for taking in the information from the public. Right now, there are no further ascertainment hearings scheduled at this time. However, the ascertainment process is still open, so in the event that anyone has not yet weighed in in terms of any concerns you have with regard to service from Comcast or educational or public access, there is still time to do so, but I would encourage you to do so soon, preferably before the next Cable Commission meeting, which is scheduled for December 7th. We do anticipate that the ascertainment process will close, and what that means is our formal record-making with Comcast will reach a conclusion. However, you will still have an opportunity to weigh in to the Cable Commission, to let them know your opinions, as well as when we hopefully do bring you a contract, you being the city council, a contract, we're hoping, in late winter, early spring, that there will be another opportunity to weigh in at that point. But obviously, the sooner we have input on the part of the Cable Commission, the better. To date, the Commission has heard from 45 people, some by mail and email and others via the ascertainment hearing process. The Commission has also received a petition from 41 others. The results of this public hearing process have been recorded in a public comments summary, which the chairman of the Cable Commission will review with you later on this evening. So as I said, we are hoping to get a draft contract for you to review early next year. And when we sit down to negotiate the contract, for any of you who haven't been through this process before, there are limits in terms of what we can bring to the table, what we can introduce in terms of the contract negotiation. Unfortunately, we have virtually no control over pricing or the programming packages. And just so you understand, that's sort of not something that municipalities are given much authority to add in terms of input. Well, we do have input into concerns such terms as the franchise fee. Right now, we're collecting 5%. We hope to maintain that 5%. We're also looking at the potential for additional channels for either education or public access, which you'll hear a lot more about later in the program this evening. Under our current contract, we do have some ability, theoretical, to have additional channels, but there are a number of limitations in the contractual language that we have now that frankly, we'd like to jettison in the next round of negotiations. The other item that we have to negotiate is the duration of the next contract, and obviously, depending on how satisfied we are with the terms of any proposed contract will affect the duration that we would recommend for the next contract. Some of you may have heard that Verizon has been in the market to offer video services over its new fiber lines. Verizon came to us fairly early in 2005 to let us know that they were planning to come and enter the market. They opened the door to negotiations but have since, shall we say, stepped away from the table. They are waiting to see the results of certain federal legislative efforts that would change the law in the area of franchising. Right now, there is federal legislation pending. It's passed the House of Representatives. It is in a committee in the U.S. Senate. With the recent elections, not clear right now what's going to happen with that legislation. But right now, Verizon is out there as a potential competitor but not ready to step up to the plate right now and enter into a contract with the city.
Thank you, Suzanne. In addition to the ascertainment hearings just described by Suzanne, the Commission undertook a telephone survey to assure that we had a statistically valid and reliable understanding of the public's attitudes. This we accomplished in early May of this year. It was conducted by the UNH Survey Center and includes interviews completed with 412 Comcast customers in Portsmouth. The interview concerned views of Comcast performance and interest in PEG access television, a topic that emerged from public hearings conducted in September and April. Commission members also visited with PEG access officials in other communities of New Hampshire. We visited Bedford, Manchester, and Londonderry, and we attended a workshop on PEG access that included representatives from several other communities, Concord, Rochester, and Merrimack. These communities have public and education access channels as well as their government channel. It was our purpose to gain an understanding of how they work, meaning how they are organized, what they do, how they are received in their communities, and some understanding of the ongoing support that they require. I've outlined the learning process because we'd like you to appreciate that while the conclusions and recommendations that we have developed are rather simple, we've tried to be thorough and thoughtful in moving toward them. So what have we learned? As cable companies go, residents of Portsmouth are satisfied with the video television service that they receive from Comcast. During our public hearings, we received no complaints about Comcast. One individual took the time to ask that the city encourage competition, a view probably silently shared by many others, but no one took time to complain about Comcast. Our survey of cable subscribers also points to conclusion, basically satisfied Comcast For context, 88% of Portsmouth residents subscribe to Comcast for video television. Of our approximately 10,000 homes in Portsmouth, approximately 9,000 are Comcast customers. 73% of these subscribers are satisfied with Comcast and 13% are not. And for a cable company, we believe these are rather good numbers of satisfaction. Subscribers report that during the past year, 47% have had a problem of some type with their service. Most of these were service interruptions, the 32% that you see there. The rest were issues such as you see, perhaps the most serious being billing issues. Of the 11% that are called "other," it represents really a variety of complaints, and if there is a common thread among them, it probably is that price as seen is too high. For service companies, the ability to successfully handle problems that arise is critically important. 64% of Portsmouth Comcast customers are satisfied in this regard. Among the 24% who were not, again, the reasons are diverse, but comment about high pricing is again an element. To understand what aspects of Comcast service subscribers would most like improved, survey respondents were offered a list of choices. Three of the most important areas of potential improvement are ones the city has no control over. Price, the top one, 93% felt that would be important to improve. Pricing packages, really the second one, more options. And the quality of programs, number four, are all areas that the city has no control over Comcast or the cable provider. Federal regulations offer no leverage to cities over pricing and channel programming choices, as Suzanne just reported. The city does have limited influence over two improvement areas: service reliability and handling of service requests, the two that are on the bottom. We can review and negotiate aspects of customer servicing, such as the handling of complaints. The final opportunity for Comcast improvement is one that the city has considerable leverage in negotiating: support for public access. 81% of Comcast subscribers believe it's important that Comcast improve its support of public access in Portsmouth. Public access was also the predominant topic of conversation at the public hearings that we conducted. And you do have in front of you, I think it's a sheet that has some blue in the front of it, which are comments from our ascertainment hearings. Virtually all of the 44 people who spoke to us were in favor of having public or educational channels in Portsmouth. Some wanted to produce or have programs that are produced locally. Some, such as United Way and Amnesty International, would like to have a venue for showing programs that are consistent with their mission. And some offered personal support for launching and running public access. A common view was that public access would be good for Portsmouth because it would be a good conduit of information and news about events and ideas that are not always readily available. But the counter side of support for public access is concern expressed by some about the cost. We heard directly from eight individuals about their concern in this regard. We received a petition from 41 additional people. We believe their concern must be respected and considered in developing any future plans. However, for the moment, it may be noted that their concern was with the funding of public access, not with public access itself. Our survey of cable subscribers provides additional insight. First, where are we today? 56% of Comcast subscribers view Channel 22 at least once a month. This represents approximately 5,000 households, and hands down, you are the most important and popular program on Channel 22. 36% of the cable-subscribing population watch city council meetings at least once a month. That's about 3,000 homes per month watching city council meetings. This is followed by those that watch city announcements, planning board, high school sporting events, school board meetings, the HDC meetings, and Board of Adjustment meetings. Most viewing is for an hour or less per week. However, this is not bad, and the data confirms what you already believe, that Channel 22 is an excellent tool for helping people to be informed about what's going on in city government. The survey shows that 73% of subscribers would like a channel devoted to public access They especially would like to receive more news about what is going on in the community, 82%. This is followed by interest in programs about nonprofit organizations, the services that they offer, political candidate debates, discussion of local civic and political topics, broadcast of local theater productions, discussions produced by local residents on topics of interest to them, and a smaller number would like programs offered by local religious Subscribers would also like Portsmouth to have a channel devoted to school programs, 53%. There's a rather uniform interest in broadcast of school productions, programs produced by high school students, reports from school officials, news about Portsmouth schools, and community sporting events. Interest in having an education channel is particularly noteworthy when viewed among Portsmouth parents with children under the age of 18, residents with school-aged children. In this case, 77% of Portsmouth parents would like this, and their priorities for what they would like to see is different from the public at large. They would like, they would especially like to have reports from school officials, 77% compared to 50% among the population at large. The point is that, as it is for city government, a channel devoted to education could serve as an important medium for communication with parents. To better understand this interest people have in PEG access channels, we asked them if they'd be willing to pay something for it. Let me be clear that we are not presently advocating that people do so. Funding is a topic we believe can be addressed later if there's an opportunity and a need to do so. Here, we just wanted to establish the level of commitment. We asked people what they thought a fair price would be for having PEG access channels. The choices ranged from nothing to over a dollar per month. Almost one-half of Portsmouth cable subscribers indicated 75 cents per month would be a fair price to pay. And we asked them what amount of money would represent an unacceptable value. 20% felt that paying anything would be unacceptable. The point at which more people would find a payment of any amount unacceptable, the unacceptable, is roughly a dollar. Thus, as we learned from our public hearings, we know there's a small group of people, that is 20%, for whom having PEG access channels would provide little value and would be disappointed if there were any expense associated with them. On the other hand, we know that the majority of people have a strong, positive opinion, so much so that they would be willing to pay something even to receive it. At this point, perhaps it would be good to clarify what public and education access is all about. We've already covered what kinds of programming would be presented. We'd like to now follow that with some examples, culled from things going on around Portsmouth and programs other New Hampshire communities have shown on their public and education access channels. This is a four-minute video, as prepared by Nancy Beach.
What is public access television? What is PEG access?
Hello, my name is Rafael Calderon, and I want to thank you for spending this time with me. I have found the secret to happiness.
Well, the "P" in PEG is for public access.
I've come to know the language.
Finally, a sports show with balls and hots.
Our community would have access to equipment to produce a program to share with neighbors over our local public access channel.
It's time where kids can just come and, you know, help each other out, do homework, make friends.
Hi, I'm Travis, and I'm taking you on an adventure.
My name is Travis Landry.
Nice to meet you, Travis Landry.
I'm a chiropractor.
Chiropractor's a doctor who takes care of your spine.
From arts?
I'm Jessie Lawrence. In this edition of Art Forms, we're going to an art show to ask artists what inspires them about a particular subject.
We're good people, Republicans, Democrats, independents.
To history and culture?
...at 25 acres is the third largest. It is known as the site of Blackbeard's honeymoon, the shipwreck of the Spanish ship Sagutu in 1813, the 1873 axe murders of two young women, and most recently, a very tasty beer.
The "E" in PEG is for educational access. This programming is usually produced by or with school personnel for the purpose of all kinds of educational programming.
Welcome back. I'm Avery Turner. My co-anchor happens to be sick tonight.
You guys have here an extensive music program, drama program, arts program. What's it doing for them?
I think for, I think for all those students that talk at high school, the expectation now is that they will participate in one of the three programs that you just outlined.
From academics?
On our side over here, we have a couple houses that butt the stream, come right up to it.
To sports?
Skiers and riders of all ability levels.
Free ball, played by Warren, new cassettes, up goes terrorists, and a kill.
The "G" in PEG is for government access. Ah, well, you already know what that is. So nurture democracy: public access television, locally-produced programming for the Seacoast community.
You did kill someone for this.
I already told you, I didn't kill anybody for it.
I hope I didn't offend anyone.
Thank you, Nancy. If Portsmouth were to have an educational channel equivalent to Channel 22, the school system would have responsibility for producing programming. The Cable Commission has had several discussions with school representatives about their needs and their interest. I would characterize the outcome of these discussions by saying they have definite interest and emerging capability. Typically, the work of producing programming by schools falls to the teachers and students in the media production department. Portsmouth High School presently has about 60 students taking video production classes. They are in the process of finalizing a two-year certificate program for TV production and broadcasting. This state certification program would be similar to ones already in place for culinary arts, auto repair, construction, architecture, and early childhood development. Graduating students develop specific competencies in the designated field and receive up to six hours of college credit. This program is expected to be in place during 2007, next year, and should lead to more students putting in more hours producing video programs. Portsmouth High School has a room designated to be a production studio, and there's interest in outfitting it as the demand for producing programs grows. Extensive discussion of governance and funding details for PEG access channels is premature. Obviously, a decision to develop these channels has not been made by you, and we do not yet even know if Comcast will make two additional channels available to the city. However, since the notion of expense, no doubt, hangs heavy in the air, I would like to offer a few comments. Generally speaking, there are two approaches to governance of public access channels: directly by the city or as a separate nonprofit organization. The benefits of operating as a nonprofit organization are that it eliminates the day-to-day operational oversight from city employees. It limits the city's liability for the actions of the channel, and it increases funding options. Financial support can be obtained from individuals and corporate donors, from grants, program sponsor fees similar to those seen on PBS, and by the sale of services to the public. The Cable Commission believes that a nonprofit form of governance is clearly preferable. Also, the Commission has developed an estimate of the cost of setting up a studio that would support either an educational channel or a public access channel or both. If done in a location such as that which has been set aside at the high school, it could be done for $100,000. This would cover the cameras, the wiring, the lighting, and the props that would be So we'd like to summarize what we've said so far, our presentation, and to make several recommendations. We recommend that, one, the city of Portsmouth negotiate a new franchise agreement with Comcast to take effect on the expiration of the existing contract, which is December 31, 2007. We believe Comcast's past performance warrants negotiation of a new contract. Number two, that the city of Portsmouth request of Comcast the right to operate an educational channel and a public access channel in addition to the current government channel. This would be subject to future review and approval by the city council of governance and operational plans to do so. Our point is we believe that the city should create an opportunity to have public and education access channels. Number three, last year, the planning board and city council approved $30,000 for capital expenditures related to cable. The Cable Commission recommends that the planning board and city council continue to support that amount in the forthcoming capital improvement program. This money could be allocated, then, to support needs of Channel 22 as well as to additional access channels if later approved by you. Number four, that the Cable Commission develop a plan for a public access channel to be operated as a nonprofit organization, and that this plan be presented to the city council during 2007. On behalf of the Cable Commission, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and to make these recommendations, and we look forward to our conversation with you, and we look forward to negotiating a new contract with Comcast on behalf of the city.
Great. Well, I guess, I think I would say, on behalf of the rest of the council, in a number of ways, that was a really fantastic presentation. If you're lucky, often you get either a nice qualitative or quantitative. We get the nice quantitative with the data collected and the analysis, and that was really well depicted. We get the qualitative with the great job that Nancy did in terms of the video and some of the practicalists. This may be what you get, this is the kind of thing you can get, once something like this matures. And it sets a nice, sets the table nicely for some Q and A and some discussion. So perhaps at this point, that may be the best place to go, is if any members here the council, maybe kick it off that way. the council maybe kick it off that way, questions or simply comments, and we'll let it go pretty free-flowing here. Let me go with Counselor Penelakos and then Counselor Dwyer.
Yeah. Didn't, did we have something like this with Continental at one time that was?
Public access?
Well, they used to interview people, and it came on just one certain station.
Public access is completely different. This is the public would be able to, public would be able to just do it on their own. That was, it's a completely different ballgame there, completely different station. It's a station all in itself.
Well, I think that was on the, Channel 3 on the dial, early on, I think they did that.
Yeah.
I remember of, of being interviewed at one time when I was running for an office at, but Continental was in here at the time.
Right, right.
And I was just wondering if it was the same.
I think they did that on their own.
They did it on their own.
Okay. And Counselor Dwyer?
Yeah, I'm interested in a couple of things about the survey and a comment that you made, John, that even though it showed, first of all, I am interested in one of the questions, 93% want lower price, but then we get to another question, and the acceptability point is the dollar a month, and yet, and at that point, you commented that you wouldn't recommend that monthly fee be added for the cost of public access, and yet, the only opposition to this seems to be from people who are concerned about the cost. So help me reconcile those, that everybody wants lower costs, but they'll pay an extra dollar a month, but you don't think that's a good idea, but the biggest opposition is lower cost.
Okay.
No problem. The 93% pertains to the interest that people have in lower cable bills from Comcast. So if you're receiving a bill this month for $50, they'd like that to be lower, of course, and they could be either in terms of the absolute price, or it could be lower because they'd like more pricing options, à la carte kind of pricing. The question that we were asking people was whether they would be willing to pay something additional each month if they had public and education access channels. So it's a little bit different. And we were pretty surprised at the percent of people who said they would. We gave them choices. We started with a dollar and said, would you, what would be a fair price for public and education channels? This would be extra per month. And so we started with a dollar, and if they said no, they were not interested in the dollar, we'd say, how about 75 cents? We just kept bargaining until we got down to the number of people who were not willing to pay for anything. We then asked the counterquestion, which is, what price would be so high that it would simply represent a poor value? And the point at which people become, you have more people that say that they would absolutely think it would be a terrible value, and the percent of people who say they think it'd be a fair value is about a dollar. So if we were trying to add an amount per month onto a cable bill in order to support public and education access, I suppose you could be anywhere from 50 cents to 75 cents or even a dollar. But we're not recommending that right now. Our thought is that there are other ways to fund the operational expenses of these channels if you choose to go that route. And that was the comment that I was trying to make with regard to, in addition to whatever amount the city might designate, there are ways to get money through grants, much like Arts Peak. There are ways to get public, program sponsorship, like on PBS, you can sell some services to people that want to use that equipment, et cetera. Long answer, and I hope I answered your question.
Just a little follow-up. Because the sense of people do value what they, what they pay for, and that while that modest amount spread across a lot of people would seem to counteract the opposition to this, if that counteracts the opposition.
Right.
That, would that be acceptable, or is there other reasons why you philosophically think this is a bad idea?
Your question is whether it would be a good or bad idea to actually put that on the bill.
Well, I'm just imagining that the argument that our body is going to have over the next year is about the cost, not about some of the other features. And I'm just curious whether, and being acutely aware that, you know, this is a community that is pressed enormously for its nonprofit services, if you're philosophically against adding a 50 cent or a 75 cent as a way to get rid of the major arguments that we will hear against it.
Right. I don't think at this point that I would want to take a position on behalf of the Commission one way or the other, and I was just trying to say that at the moment, we're not advocating that we do add on some expense to pay for it. With your approval, we'd like to give thought to the whole issue of governance and how to support it, and then come back with some recommendations.
The whole thing would be up to the council. The difference is, one, people have the wrong idea, I think, in many cases about the franchise fee being a sort of gift. Well, basically, the franchise fee is the general fund, just like any licenses and fees and so forth. It's in lieu of taxes. I was there from the very, very beginning years ago at the city hall down at the corner of Daniel Street, okay, when it all started, and there was no way of taxing them because they had no building, nothing. You can't tax them for the wires or anything. So we came up at that time with a franchise fee, and it was 7% back then, a lot of people don't know that, and it was of gross income, and they paid it. It wasn't passed on. As years progressed, the government says, took over, says it can be passed through, and it can't be more than 5%. It's really no difference because, in the beginning, I'm sure it was part of their cost of doing business, and they passed it on anyway. Now it's a separate charge. Some people say, I wish they'd drop it simply because you're taxing us. Well, it won't make any difference because if we dropped it, they'd absorb it in a hurry, and you'd still be paying it, believe me, they'd take that right in. So there's a big difference between the taxpayers' money going towards any of this, and this is what I've been touting right along. I don't like to see taxpayers' money going into this, especially the public access, which I think these, these three people are just great people, and they're really got a, they really came in, they've got an agenda, they want to push this through, and I'd like to see it go through too, but I don't think it's right for taxpayers to pay for it, simply because I don't think it's the type of service that taxpayers expect. When I pay my taxes, I want a service for it. I want police, fire, school, something like that, a service that I can say, I'm receiving this. Will that do it? That's why I want to back the, the nonprofit organization type of deal. Then, if you see it going well, and it comes through, and it's fruitful, and you want to grant them some money, then you can do that. But I can tell you, make sure that it's run by a nonprofit organization, that this city keeps out of it because of the liability. I really believe that if you set it up and it becomes a city operation, you're going to be liable for what these people do on this thing, and it's free speech. They can say anything.
One thing I would note is, and I think, John, that you'd mentioned this a few minutes ago, for this evening, I think it's important to lay out, this is sort of the beginning of the pros and cons of both sides. We've heard a few pros, we've got a few cons already, and there are some on both sides, to be sure, though I think that it's probably first for a future meeting of the Commission to have that discussion, and then to come back to us with sort of, and you're already laying it out, and I think indirectly, Chris laid out some, and there are, like I said, it's a very good discussion, and let's face it, at the end of the day, I think with this data show, is there is relatively little opposition to the concept of one or both of these channels. That's really almost the moot question here. It's almost mom and apple pie. I mean, that's not the issue. It's who's paying, is mom paying for the apple pie? And that's the, that's the question. It's the dollar side of it. And indeed, I think that there, even that is a somewhat nuanced argument. I think almost nobody would doubt that in the non-governmental, that is nonprofit or in the nonprofit format, there is some capacity to raise some money. The question is how much? Would you be spending all your, you know, that sort of discussion. Certainly, you could, with relatively little, I'll call it, pain per person, raise some money by city. The question is, at what point is the pain? That's sort of the price sensitivity, the elasticity, point you were bringing up. So that's where the discussion comes in, and it gets, I think, fairly nuanced pretty quickly because we're not dealing in a many-million-dollar municipal budget. We're not dealing with huge money, but there is a legitimate philosophical position on both sides. So I think that's where, and I think the council will agree with me, getting the Commission together to have that discussion, coming back to us with your thoughts, pro and con, and then at some point, that's probably going to be most of our discussion, because it's not an if thing. Concept, people are, I think, pretty on board with the concept in theory. It's just a matter of how you pay for it, how much will it cost? Before, and I saw many hands, a quick question or two I wanted to ask along those lines. Counselor Dwyer had asked the really, I thought, interesting question of people in different questions expressing different points of view. We pay too much, but I'd be willing to pay a little more, but, that sort of thing. I would imagine that what we're really getting back to is a value question, that there's a certain percentage of people, it's the à la carte argument, that it seems, I think at the federal level, people are very concerned about the lack of à la carte capability or the limitations of à la carte. There are just these broad, you know, do you want these broad packages, but it's basically do you want, you know, HBO or not? I mean, that's sort of the level it's at. So this seems to me to be an extension of that à la carte argument. This is just another, in theory, if you could add this additional capacity, would you be willing to pay for this? And that's an à la carte type of question, and the answer most people have when you give them an à la carte question is an à la carte answer. That is, yeah, assuming the majority of people in the community are interested in the product, which the survey suggests they are, probably the majority of people would be willing to pay something for that product. That's what à la carte's all about. So I think there's consistency to it, but that's, again, when you have the discussion about where's the price sensitivity point, that kind of thing, that's when all that will get determined. One quick question I had in dealing with if government, local government, was involved at any level, whether it's one penny or many pennies a year, where, and I think you brought that up a minute ago, where does government involvement in the funding influence the kind of programming or the government's ability, in theory, to say, hey, we don't want that kind of programming, and hey, we're paying for some of it? That seems like a very sensitive topic. Maybe that's part of the discussion for that upcoming meeting, but is that, is that something that would be a significant factor in that discussion?
Your Honor, if I might, I think one of the things that the Commission and other Commissioners should probably chime in, the whole concept was to use these funds from the capital side for a capital investment, not for the operation of the access channel. So it would be a combination of an educational program, combination of a service that we provide our citizens. It's like, I don't want to use the analogy, it's like setting up, you know, you have certain, you know, things that even in a park, people can use a park bench, you can, you know, things that, so they, people will be able to come in and use these cameras, use the items that are purchased through a capital item within the budget. Again, I mean, it's similar to a boat launch. So we're not, we're not basically telling what they can put on. The idea would be, and I think there's some consensus on the Commission, they might want to see a nonprofit operate. So basically, the idea would be to set up a studio, make sure that the equipment's there, just like we do for a number of things for citizens in our community, and the operation of it, I mean, there's going to be a lot of things that have to go. I know the Commission has visited many places, so the operation probably would not be inside the local government purview. So the idea was do it for a capital item.
Right. And I guess the question I'll have for when you get to that point is, understanding what John just said, if as part of that, because I suspect it may be a question when you come back, if part of it also involved ongoing, which I'm not espousing this, sir, I'm just, because I know it'll get asked, if there, if the city were to participate in funding and operating operations, that is post-startup, non-capital, talking operating, the question that we'll likely have is, what would that mean for the government, say, in terms of the arm involved in that programming, the free speech component?
Could I just address that quickly? Just to give you an example from other public access, is we would, let's say, create a nonprofit that perhaps would get some money from city government or not, but let's say it did. We would create policies, then, that I'm sure, should we receive funds from the city, would be appropriate from your point of view. No profanity, no nudity, you know, and we could come up with a list of what would go and what wouldn't fly. I mean, it's, it's free speech, but there is, there is a limit. So we can have guidelines that would be acceptable if we were to receive city money, and obviously, you know, it stretches a little, but, but I know that in talking to a number of other public access stations, there honestly have been very, very little that has been in poor taste, if I might say. So, but you can definitely come up with guidelines that would be appropriate, and I think we would want to do that.
That's discussion again down the line, it's part of the whole funding. I know I saw a lot of hands, I'm trying to get them in order. I know Counselor Reynolds had been waiting for a while. Let me kind of zigzag here. Counselor Reynolds, Counselor Whitehouse, and then I think I saw Counselor Grasso and Counselor Smith. I apologize for the line, but we'll keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have questions along a couple of different lines, but since we'll, in your fairness, I'll start with this, a couple that are along the lines of what Counselor Dwyer was asking about. And actually, first of all, I have to ask a question first of the, of the Commission. The slide on, slide number four that shows the numbers for the video service provided, these are numbers that are of the cable subscriber survey. Is that correct or no? Is it?
These are the cable subscriber survey, 80% Comcast.
So it's not that 80% of households in Portsmouth have Comcast? Is that? That's not?
It's very similar. It's 80% of the households in Portsmouth who have, excuse me, have Comcast video service. It is possible they might have Comcast internet and not have video. Yes, I'm not sure about that.
So, so in terms of the whole market in the city, all the households?
Yes.
Maybe, Alan, you can chime in. Almost 90% are subscribers to cable television?
Correct.
Correct.
Wow. All right. Well, that, okay. That might affect the answer to the following question, because what I was, wanted to ask about is, assuming that we can get these two additional channels, Comcast to allow us to have these two additional channels, is that an expense, or is that an expense to them? Is there a reason that they wouldn't, that they might not do that? Is that a significant additional expense to them to provide two additional channels on the system?
I can answer that one. They will lose revenue. If they give up two channels, they'll lose revenue, so they'll, they'll lose maybe a, yeah, they'll lose a local channel, or they'll maybe lose one of the other channels from the 1 to 22 range. So, you know, from your basic cable, you pay, I think, $14 for your basic cable. So it's a revenue source. And so from the Comcast point of view, they will, they will definitely use revenue from, lose money from advertising.
Okay, because they have to allocate one of those, 1 to 22, to non-revenue producing?
Correct.
Okay. What I was wondering is, is to the extent that the addition of two additional channels like this, public access, educational and public access, might actually, is there any experience around the country or anything that that might actually increase the subscription rates to Comcast? Although the first, answer to the first question, that 80% are already subscribers, says there's not much more room. Might they actually increase their market share?
I think cable companies sound as though they're a little more enlightened than they were a few years ago with Comcast, excuse me, with competition coming in.
The mentality?
If you can get public access channels via Comcast, and you can't get it off your dish, you know, it's, it's a good thing for them. And so they seem to be a little more enlightened.
Okay.
I, I have Dish right now, and I wouldn't go to, I would switch to Comcast if there was public access.
The mentality has changed, in my point of view, over the last three years.
Okay, and so following on those two questions, then, I was just sort of wondering, and maybe you could comment, if, then, if that's possibly the case, if the additional revenue to Comcast, I don't know what the whole revenue picture looks like, they lose money from the other channels, but they might gain the other channels, but they might gain subscription rates, if that might provide funding that would help support the operation of the channel.
That's one of the questions we would have to ask them during negotiations. If you're going to give us this, because so far, you know, the last several years, they don't give us anything.
You're right.
They pass it through, okay? And that's one of the questions I would ask. If we get this, are you going to pass it through?
We may, one of the things I would, and I defer to Suzanne, we're still in ongoing negotiations with Comcast, and I'm sure that, so we probably want to, you know, make sure that we limit a lot of our discussion that might fall into some strategic areas, so, I don't know. Pipe in Suzanne, if you feel.
No, I, I would agree with that. We just need to be sensitive to the fact that we are about to enter negotiations.
As far as funding, Suzanne, I don't think you're going to have any trouble with the taxpayers of Portsmouth on the education channel. I mean, that's, that's a service, that's, I don't think you have any problem there.
On my, on my last question, then, I don't know how much you would be able to comment, Suzanne, but you referred to the federal legislation at the beginning, and I think, unless, as you said, unless something happens very quickly before the end of the year, we'll have a new Congress, whatever legislation will have to be reintroduced, of course. Is the legislation that's being contemplated, something, would the meaning of it be potentially that Verizon, we, we might have a situation, say, by the end of next year, in which Verizon would be able to directly compete in the TV market in Portsmouth, and residents might have a choice, as they do now, between Comcast and Verizon for high-speed internet, they might actually be able to choose a package from Comcast or a package from Verizon.
The last contact I had with Verizon is that, you know, they would like to enter the market, they want to compete, but they were waiting to see what happened at the federal level, because obviously, it's very time-consuming to go, if you're entering the market new, to negotiate with each town and municipality. And, you know, they've rolled out the fiber here in Portsmouth, along with other parts of New Hampshire, and Massachusetts, and other parts of the country. They put a lot of eggs in the basket, in terms of this federal legislation, and what's going to happen now with the, the change at the federal level. It's too soon, I don't have word yet, in terms of what will happen, in terms of that legislation or reintroduction of a new, of a new piece. It did have a lot of support and was moving forward, but again, that was post-election. But we're going to wait and see.
Just let me point out that if, say Verizon did want to come into the market tomorrow, the current contract states that they can do. So the last negotiation, we ensured that if there was competition, they could come in at any time. And this is three years ago, so we were kind of thinking ahead three years ago, and so...
They can only come in if they have a contract with the city. They can't come in without our permission.
No, we could let them in, is what I meant.
Right, exactly. But the market, the contracts are open, so.
Yeah, okay.
And they would have to pay the franchise fee and have exactly the same, would receive exactly the same.
Thanks.
Great, thanks. Council Whitehouse.
Well, that's the same question I wanted to ask, in reference to Verizon. They've spent considerable money running fiber optics and considerable time and labor in this city, and I think they were very serious at one time. But, you know, this, there's no indication when this federal legislation could be passed that will allow them to come back and be a competitor?
Verizon always has the opportunity to come back and negotiate individual contracts with individual municipalities, just like Comcast is doing now. However, there were certain advantages under the proposed federal legislation, you know, standard forms, standard five percent, depending on what your existing relationship is with your current provider. It was real, it was an expedited process that would really allow them to roll out faster in the communities throughout the country. What they're going to do now, I think it's just too early to tell. We're still, you know, it's still post-election, and I don't have a sense, at this point, what's happening.
Is this piece of legislation in, in committee, in Washington, to study?
Starts all over again in January, new Congress.
The existing legislation had passed, the House of Representatives, and it was in the Senate Commerce Committee, and a report was actually issued, so it would, prior to the election, it was, there was some question in terms of whether it would move forward. Now, like I said, we don't have a feedback yet, in terms of what's going to happen, or I haven't actually looked at the sponsor list of the original legislation to see who's, who's left.
Who survived, yeah.
That was my main concern, Mayor, that's all.
I don't, I don't think that there is much question that Verizon will be here at some point. It's just a matter of what the timetable is.
I think, it sounds like an important point to make here, correct me if I'm wrong, is that while one would hope, for competition's sake, that Verizon, in this case, would be able to play in the market to create that additional competition, there's that sentiment. But the other side of it is, they don't have to be concurrent, correct? I mean, the, the contract lengths, let's say it was a three-year contract, do not have to be at the exact same start and end times, they're completely separate entities. So if, even though you might be disappointed that it takes them an extra year because of changes in federal legislation, it does, all it means is it delays when they come in, not, you have to wait the entire life of the contract with their, so that's, that's an important point. It's just hurry on up and get in, but that's about the only sentiment, so.
The key is to keep the contract open if you're negotiating.
Okay, Joan.
Yes, thank you. Early this fall, people started talking to me about the cable contract and about the access channels, and the comment was that they were not interested at all if there was any charge or any cost to it that would be borne by the city. So for that reason, I would support the idea of the nonprofit. I think that, that's a good, good thought. And although it sounds good about having a studio and having it equipped with cameras and everything, you have to really be careful how that's done, because when you get too many people handling equipment, it just doesn't have the lifespan that it should. And I have a great concern, even though Nancy mentioned about a group of people that would oversee, but very concerned about the taste of the programs, because what may not be crude or offensive to one person could easily be that way to another person, and I have a great concern about that. I also wondered if, we're looking for, we have a, we have a government channel, we're looking for a public channel and an education channel. Would it be possible to put the public channel on with the current government channel? Because we do, this, one of the comments in here said that Channel 22 is not filled up at this point.
If I might, your honor, I know we had discussions in, in the commission, and from my perspective, I don't think we should co-mingle the government channel with the access channel for the reasons that you stated earlier on. You know, on the one hand, we could have a freewheeling show, which is very entertaining, on one moment, and then the next moment, we start up the city council meeting.
Which is, of course, completely not entertaining or freewheeling.
Yes, that's true, that's true, your honor. But my point is, I think it's important for, because if you talk to Alan now, I mean, I think we've filled up a lot of the government channel. There, there is competition for space on the government channel, and just, just by virtue of the fact that the rerunning of programs such as the debates, we had to pull programs, we had to move them around. So yes, the, you know, there is, I think, we're filling that up, and that's what Comcast is going to want to see anyways. But I don't know if you want to have the, the government channel. Yeah, I, I think that we had a lot of discussion on that.
Excuse me, I, I think what we did was, say, we combined, if, if, to start them off at the school, the education could go with government, that's still all city, I wouldn't mix the public access. Use the education to fill in sometimes and get them kids going. We discussed this a long time with them, when we went to the high school.
In our talks with Comcast, are we asking for two channels?
Yes.
And what if, is there a possibility of only asking for one, for instance?
Let's put it this way, Joan. This is Grasso.
No, it's all right.
Yeah, it's kind of like negotiation territory.
Those channels won't even be turned on until we have something to put them on, but we have the ability to get them. We want them ready, so that if, if the education channel can be used along with the, the city channel, we need more space, then we open up the education one. If the nonprofit gets going, and they have program and everything, then they, because they won't turn it on unless there's programs, and then that's ready to go, then they'll turn it on. But we've got to have the ability to have those channels available to us if and when we need them. They won't be just there automatically. They got to have something on them.
But I really like the idea of the nonprofit, because people, there are people who really are angry at the price of cable.
I know.
And to have to pay a decent amount of money.
I know, I got Council Smith in the queue. If it's on the same, to kind of close the loop on this specific point, otherwise, I want to go with Council Smith. So two hands here.
I, I just wanted to find, these, the reason for this meeting, to get these two stations, is because they have to be negotiated into the contract.
Our, our strong belief is that our position in negotiating will be vastly strengthened by having your support, in order to get those two additional channels. We believe we need your strong support.
And one thing that we do seek to do, I think, shortly, is to, there were the four recommendations, is before the end of this meeting, to shortly see if we can reach consensus for approval for most, if not all, of those recommendations for that very reason.
Exactly.
Can, can I follow up? The financing part of it, of whether it's going to be capital improvement, or capital funding, or nonprofit money, or donations, or whatever it is, that can be settled later.
Exactly.
Right.
But we need to know if we, that we can negotiate these two channels.
All we want right now is two channels. The rest of it can be handled, when a...
The, the whole funding part, though, very important, will be determined at a later time by a meeting that may look very similar to this, or something else, but that will be an important discussion, but not primarily for this evening.
I just didn't want to come, put the two of them together, because I might not go for it if it included the financing tonight and what it had to be done. But if we are going to just have to negotiate, be so that they can negotiate, put it in their negotiations, then that's a different story.
I saw your hand.
And to clarify on what Louis just said, we're really asking tonight, for your blessing, to ask for the right to have two channels. And as we've said, those channels won't actually come on until we've decided how that will be governed, and how it will be funded, and all of that. So we're not actually asking for two channels, we're asking for the right, in the contract, to have them when we're ready.
Well put. And now, the most patient man in show business, Ken Smith.
Thank you, your honor. I think I want to take a step back and kind of shift gears a bit, and it's, and it's really your first recommendation, and that is to negotiate a new franchise agreement with Comcast. What concerns me the most is the one thing, I guess, we don't have say over, and that is the citizens of the city are very concerned about the actual cost that they're, they're paying for this. Is, do you go out to bid, or walk me through the process of dealing with other companies other than Comcast, such as, you know, a Time Warner, a Delphi? Do they have to approach us? Can we go to them and say, hey, we're up to new? How does that process go, so maybe we can create competition by having an open bid process? Walk me through that, please.
I can give you an example from what we did last year, with the last negotiations. We actually went out to bid. We, you know, we created an RFP with the help of our attorney, and we went out to bid, and we, you know, we informed all the local cable providers, what was happening, Adelphia, Time Warner, and basically, nobody came. And there's, there's reasons for it, infrastructure and costs.
The key, though, is, for the competition, is the Verizon. I mean, when they came to the city to wire the community, we made every effort to work with them so that they could get it done as quickly as possible. That's where your competition's going to come from, counselor. It's going to come, because our, as Alan said, and as the city attorney, assistant city attorney can confirm, within our agreement, Verizon can come to us at any time during the term of the agreement with Comcast, and can say, we'd like to offer a service similar, and we would negotiate that and, and go forward, depending on what happens with the federal legislation. So we could have two providers at some point, and they would be competing. So I think we have competition that's capable, but it's at this point, when are they going to launch?
If, if that happens, but again, my question was more along the lines of, so none of, nobody else came to the table?
Nobody else came to the table. Adelphia at the time was actually being acquired by Comcast, and I think they've just been acquired by Comcast. Time Warner, they're not in the region, so it's how it's set up, regionals.
And maybe the city attorney can talk a little bit about how it would be to decertify somebody. It's like almost next to impossible, because of the infrastructure that's in place and the cost.
So once they get in, they're in.
Once they get in, if the service is relatively, you know, acceptable, and as a practical matter, they do have their infrastructure in here, and it's very expensive to put up wires, boxes, you know, put all those lines up, work with PSNH and Verizon to hang, you know, fiber, or whatever the delivery method is. It's not cheap, which is why no one's going to come just to serve, you know, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, you know. If they are, if you have another competitor that's expanding from another region, and you're in that expansion zone, maybe. But right now, there really isn't another competitor in the market, or looming, except for Verizon at, at this point.
Okay. All right. Council Dwyer?
Because we're sort of accepting, I think we all, based on, on your survey results, are accepting that there's a high desire and demand for this, I'd like to ask just a little bit more about the survey. In terms of whether the items that are about what people want were fixed response items, or whether those were collapsed from an open-ended question, and how the questions were asked about choice?
They were fixed response.
They were fixed response.
They were choices given.
And how was it asked?
They were asked how important, I think it was a five-point scale, and those are all of, the accumulation of people said important, as opposed to unimportant.
So these are collapsed, like, four and five, probably, choices four and five, or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I want to just put that in perspective, because it doesn't mean, if you ask me, you know, what would you like, that eighty-two percent of us would say, I would like local community news, that it really comes from saying, how much would you like local community news? And if I say, it's somewhat important to me, or it's very important, I get into that blue bar. So, I mean, we have to put that into account, because I think that does change, then, in the long run, who you think might pay for it. Because it, it puts it into a different perspective for me. And I guess I would just like to say, I know we're not talking about who would pay for it tonight, but we keep collapsing two of the three groups. I do think there's the, the taxpayer who is different than the user. And to keep those two distinct, because those are two possibilities. And, you know, you could say the non, not-for-profit, in the long run, is the taxpayer or the user. It's not coming out of the air, it's not, and I, I think the experiences of community radio would maybe be very instructive along these lines, and that might be very helpful to hear about, because that is the pure nonprofit, as opposed to the, the user fee or the taxpayer.
And certainly, I would, I would suggest that as we move to the next step, assuming that the two-channel, or some variation of it, is still on the table at that point, that probably the experience of a recent low-power FM station, and what they've done as a nonprofit entity, will be pretty instructive. Some of the strengths and weaknesses of what they've tried to do, and they could probably help us avoid recreating the wheel, which is always desired. Anyway, so, yep, Suzanne.
And I would just say, the commission actually did a lot of work. They went to Manchester, Concord, Londonderry. There are a lot of models out there, so it really is not reinventing the wheel. There are quite a number of communities that do have public access and/or educational. Most, most of them are nonprofit structures, and so, you know, there are bylaws out there that talk about programming. So there really are a lot of resources for the committee to draw and, and to share with you when, you know, the time is appropriate.
Well, let, oh, yeah.
If I may, and also in the interest, I suppose, of full disclosure, I ought to mention that I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of Portsmouth Community Radio, and the board has expressed the interest in assisting the city in forming this public access in particular. So you're quite right that our experience can be instructive in that regard.
So I think that'll definitely be a piece of the discussion going forward. At this point, want to close this up, unless there's something burning inside of any of you, to, but I think the, the deliverable for this evening, certainly a key deliverable, is to get some formal sense from the counselors that are here, as to the four recommendations that were outlined at the end of that excellent presentation. were outlined at the end of that excellent presentation. The first one, dealing with negotiating a new franchise agreement with Comcast. The second, the right to the two-channel, to bring that topic to fruition. The third would be a $30,000 capital expenditure that we did this past year, and the recommendation that the planning board and city council continue to support that level. Again, the emphasis there being on the capital side of it over multiple years to get towards a critical number. And the fourth, to be operated as a nonprofit organization, and that this be presented to the council at some point during '07.
Your Honor, just one thing on item number three, just so the council's aware, and I'm sure you are, that is for tonight, I'll place it in the capital plan like I do with 100 other items. So when we get down to March and April, you can always move it out, you can shift it around, do whatever you want, because ultimately, the city council has the appropriation process that takes place in May, so.
This is not a hand tonight or a voice tonight from the council saying, yes, this four-point recommendation is something that, in general, is favorable, does not mean that you've just locked in 30 grand of the capital budget for FY08 and you can't do anything about it. Of course, we can't do that tonight. Before we go to that, Counselor Whitehouse?
Before we give them the blessing, if we are going to give them the blessing, item number, well, number four on the last page, recommendation in reference to developing a plan, and they'd be presenting it before the city council. I just hope it's not an 11th-hour type movement. I hope it's presented early in, well, the mid-part of '07, so that we can discuss and, you know, cipher the whole plan sensibly, instead of coming in in November or the last of December. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Well, I don't think you have to worry about it, because we don't have the channel yet.
Right.
Right.
You have to wait till you negotiate.
I mean, but this nonprofit organization has to get a head start and be ready.
And clearly, the details of an organization, and let's say a nonprofit organization, there's a lot of work between here and there. You know, how do you, developing the leadership of it, developing the steel, these sort of things. But what we're talking about tonight, just so that we're not, this is not so binding, that when you raise your hand to say yes, it's the in principle. That's really the key here. In principle, are these four pieces to this discussion favorable, things that you'd like to see pursued further? We will have the opportunity to see these later in the game. We're not locking in interminally to something, to a certain dollar amount or a certain timetable.
Are you looking for a motion?
Unless, yep, let me go with Counselor Dwyer.
My question's about two of them first.
Okay.
Number four only refers to public access. It does not refer to educational, and I'm wondering if the assumption is that if we're operating an educational channel, that the school department would operate it? Is that the, and?
I believe the assumption is that that does pertain to public access, that the commission, you would be asking us to come back with a plan for governance and for operating a public access. We didn't at all wish to exclude education, we just thought that that was a different matter, and that if you also, this evening, give the green light to getting an education channel, then there could be other discussions and plans, probably with the school board, coming back for how they would plan to do that.
I mean, it just feels to me, if we're recommending in number two, the two together, we need to do something around communication about the education one and not just let one hang out there.
Basically, a pretty concurrent.
I would think so.
The infrastructure that you'd be, the same process would apply for the educational channel as well, is that's what I'm hearing?
Right, that the discussions would start with the school department.
Okay.
And then I have another question about number three, and that is, I didn't remember that we actually put funds in last year, but that we did a placeholder for years out?
We did, we did funds for these cameras.
Oh, got it, okay.
And because they were getting retired.
Current, not future, got it, okay.
They look a lot nicer on TV now.
Microphones.
And we have also, what we did is, we also did some portable equipment as well.
And also your microphones that you use in your work sessions with.
Portable equipment.
It was our intention that this $30,000 per year, you may spend it, you may never spend it. You may move it back. I mean, it's, it's the, it isn't, it just goes in, you know, it's just whatever the planning.
Right, and Counselor, just to follow up, I think what you were referring to, we did place hold in '09, $250,000. But there was actually funds appropriated, $30,000 for a lot of improvements in this room, microphones, portable equipment, not for a public access channel, but to keep our government channel running. And I think there was a couple, a tape deck or?
Yes, also, yeah.
So the intent in number three is not the 250 that we plugged in for future, but something for next year.
Right, so the idea, but just following up on that, as you're well aware, with the capital budget, like we haven't done in a number of things, we start financing every year, and we can save it for the next year, because it doesn't collapse at the end of the fiscal year. So in many of the projects that you see, we sometimes will fund half, and then we'll accumulate it and then spend it. So that was the intent of the commission, not to hit it all at once, but to, you know, like we do with the tree committee and parks and playgrounds and things of that sort. So we'll just show it out as an item for the six years.
But any cable-related needs could be this general.
Right.
I mean, it's not just for public access.
Right.
As long as you understand that.
That's right. Okay, great questions. Any other questions on these four recommendations along those lines before we seek a motion here to?
Are we just giving the blessing in that sense?
Yeah, on a broad level. In fact, it doesn't have to be so formal as that. In terms of these four, given the question and answer, those are good questions to kind of specify for the details. I see we're missing one counselor, okay, the eight here, would be in favor of the cable commission moving forward with these four recommendations they've laid out tonight. If you are, please raise your hand. Okay? And I don't see anybody against, it's all eight or four. So hopefully, that says a fairly clear message that we like the direction of those four. Obviously, there'll be details we'll need to work out as we move forward. You've heard some of them. A lot of them have dollar signs at the beginning of those sentences, and that's okay.
Just a reminder for the city council, for next Monday night, we have a work session that will be in this room, and it will be dealing with the budget for FY08. I might recommend that you bring last year's budget, the award-winning budget, and have it with you, because many of the things in there, you can relate, you know, you can speak about, and I'll have other information with estimates for next week and timelines and things of that sort.
And last unrelated note, as a reminder for councilors, this Wednesday, I believe it's at 11 o'clock, that we're, people should be showing up at 11 o'clock at the Metro for the annual dinner the Metro does and Sam Jarvis does, for those that are in need. So if you are able to be there for that time, it's well worth going. And with that, I think we're all done, and very much appreciate everybody coming out on this Monday evening.
I just want to say, a good job.
Yeah, great job, really, excellent presentation.
Yeah, very much.
Hang on to this guy. Boy, I'll tell you, he's, he is the best diplomat I've ever seen when he has to deal with me and the other ones.
There's a tremendous skill set, I see down the.
Diverse and tremendous.
Anyway, thank you.
And I will not comment.
There you go, there you go, proving your diplomacy again. Okay, thanks, everybody, and. Move to a journal, though we didn't move.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Thank you, have a great evening.